All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 2024 zoning Board of Appeals meeting for the town of Carmel. Board members' names are in front of you on the dais. Mike Carnaza, co-enforcement officer, is with us, as well as Greg Fushetti, Town Council. The way we operate is I'll ask you to come up when I call you on the agenda item. I'll swear you in. We'll ask you to speak your case in front of us, and then we'll open it up to the board members for any questions, comments, and then we'll open it up to the public. Once we close a discussion or a hearing, there's no further input on it from anybody other, and including board members, but from the public especially. So will you all please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first case tonight, they've requested a holdover. It's Rob Norbert Latewick. Tough name there. I'll look for a motion to hold that over.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we won't be hearing that tonight if anyone's here for that. Second application is for Robert Altiro, number two, and its code requires... Are they not here again?
They are not here. They are not here.
Was it Willie?
It was Willie.
It's Willie.
I think Willie was representing him.
Should we dismiss it?
Well, they were trying to get a letter because the garage is over the property line, and they did something with the second floor.
It was supposed to be an easement agreement between the two parties.
So I don't know if they're still seeking that. I don't know what's going on.
I'll tell you what, and put this on the record, maybe Dawn, if you're picking this up, we're gonna give him one more month, I think, and then beyond that...
At least contact us and let us know what you're doing.
Yeah, I mean, this is, we can't keep holding this on the agenda. So I'll look for a motion.
Motion, motion hold it over?
Second.
Are those all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, last, this is the last time.
Last time.
Last chance.
Understood.
Last dance.
John, the next one, they asked for a holdover, I mean, in a German...
Withdrawal.
He really wants, I spoke to his father earlier, and he really wanted to be held over, just to discuss it with their attorney, see if it's worth coming in in front of the thing. Is that okay with you? I mean, it's up to you to vote, but...
He said it was, didn't he write back as a dismissal?
Yeah.
As a dismissal. He wrote dismissal, but he meant, his father said he meant to say, "Hold over for a month to see if his attorney would handle him." I don't know if he's gonna or not. So he's talking to the attorney right now. Otherwise, he's gonna have to pay the fee and re-notice it.
Same situation. We'll give him one more month. I mean, you know, this is kind of ridiculous. So I'll look for a motion to hold application number festo, number three.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, sorry. Application number four, Jorona Vukaj for variation of section... We have another one here?
Isn't that a Willie case?
I don't know if it was represented. He, Mr. Vukaj came into my office and met with Rose. I did not see Willie with him.
Recently?
No, when he did the application a month ago.
Oh.
Okay, you know what?
Same.
One more month. Can you ask Rose or Dawn to reach out to these folks and say, "Look, we're giving you one more month, and we're gonna dismiss without prejudice beyond that point"?
We didn't get an email, right?
Sorry?
There was no email, right?
No.
I didn't think so.
We didn't see that.
I didn't see what he did.
The only email, nothing...
The only email was withdrawal, well, there are three emails, withdrawal for festo. Guthrow was requested to be held over. That's only the first time. And we'll take it with it, number one. Okay.
Motion to hold over Vukaj.
You wanna vote on that? Hold over for Vukaj?
I'll look for a motion to hold that over. I thought we did that already.
No, no, you didn't do this one.
You didn't do it.
Second.
By Rose, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, application number four is held over. All right, new applications this evening. Application 728 Route 6 LLC for variation of section 156-41C4, seeking an area variance for permission to add 17.5 square foot sign to the side of the commercial building. The property is located at 728 Route 6, Mahol Pack, New York, tax map 76.22-1-54. The code requires or allows one sign per establishment, and what's gonna be sought here is two signs. So variance is, is one sign on the side. Mr. Gu, representing, raise your hand. Well, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mike Longo. Address 728.
Hold on, Mike. Speak into the microphone, bring it closer. Yeah, you can direct it down through your mouth. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Long, Mike Longo, and the address is 728 Route 6.
Okay, raise your hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
You go, okay. Bring us through your application.
Yeah, I just added one on the side. I think like the building, on the side of the building, like a 40-degree angle toward to the roof seats, you know, the, from that side, the sign, I think, sunlight face to the roof seats there, you know?
All right, so this, it's, it's already up, right? And we see the picture of it, right?
The sign?
The sign.
Sign, not yet, no.
Oh.
That's rendition.
That's a rendition.
You put that on there.
The front sign is up, John.
So this is, this is a smaller of the four stores out of that.
Yeah, small.
Yeah, so it might be kinda tough getting some exposure.
There is something in the front, though. There is a small sign on the front.
Yes. He's allowed two, once, two square feet per foot of building frontage. So whatever the width of the store is, he's allowed times two. And then he, I guess, when people are driving down Route 6 and it's on your left, he wanted to be able to see it from there.
As you're coming north.
Yeah, I mean, I get it, because it's a smaller store. It's not even like 10 feet wide, right?
No, it's small, yes. Like seven feet wide in the front, yeah.
Is there any eat-in space in that, in that store?
Huh?
Can you eat in, dine in?
We have, we have two, three small, small table there.
Yeah, it's mostly takeout.
It's more to eat and run.
Takeout, mostly takeout.
Okay, so I mean, for the fact that, that you got such a short view, I mean, on that front side, I think I'm okay, we're definitely okay with you having a sign, but I think maybe we, we gotta bring the size down a little bit. You didn't, you didn't build this yet, right?
I didn't build it yet, no.
Okay.
Square footage.
It's a small, it's, it's not, not that big, 17.5 square feet?
Yeah, we usually try to negotiate these things down a little bit, just to, you know, we don't wanna make it look like New York City here with, you know, Times Square with signs all over the place, but...
What's the dimensions of the sign here?
Yeah, that's a good question, John.
The sign, the sign is seven by two and a half.
That's what the sign proposed, additional sign is seven by 2.5 feet?
Yeah, two, two feet, no, not 2.5, I misread it. Two feet, five inches, so it's less than two and a half.
By seven feet?
Yep.
So you're looking at, you know, like about 17 square feet here?
Yeah, 17 and a half square feet.
17.5 inch.
Now, is, is that the full sign itself or the actual wording?
We, this one, we have the two pieces, look like a letter, you know, they designed it looking like a letter, you know?
Is, is it a back, backlit sign? Is it lighting inside?
Yeah, lighting inside.
So it's a case, it's got some depth, depth to it, like four inches or so, and it's lit inside?
Yes, yes.
So that's probably why it's gotta be so, so rectangular.
It's a light box.
It's a light box, it's backlit.
It's a light box. It's above the window.
All right, I, I think, I think we gotta pare it down in size, Mike, to be honest with you, because you don't want that big of a sign anyway taking over that, that whole facade, but you still wanna get your, your point across, you still wanna advertise it. Am I alone here, or do you guys?
No, I, I think maybe, 'cause I'm looking at the way the sign is presented on, on the picture. I mean, I think if you, and maybe, John, like, if it just fits over the window...
I was just about to say.
I think that would be a nice, clean look.
Yeah.
You know, if it just fits over the window.
You see the frame of the window?
Yeah, it's a sign, it's here. The bottom is not, the, the, the bottom, I put the tempera coming soon, yeah.
Yeah, that, you're gonna remove that.
Huh?
You're gonna remove that sign.
I removed this sign, yeah.
You didn't remove the measurement of that. What size is the window, then? Do you know? Do you have a...
Window, we have the, like, like, how many feet? Nine, like, nine, eight feet?
Nah, it can't be, if this, if this is represented...
Nine feet, I think, I say nine feet.
You know, top to bottom, nine feet, right? Or what's the width of that sign?
The one along?
Yeah, what's the width of this window?
I think it's, I think it's nine feet, I think.
Well, the sign's seven feet, so if you're showing, maybe, maybe the way you show the sign...
I think eight feet, 96 inch long.
Perhaps the sign isn't to scale.
That's, yeah, may not be, 'cause I'm, I'm looking at the picture, and it's about almost the size of, each panel of glass is almost the size of a sheet of plywood with four feet. So this, this window is probably about eight feet wide, and then...
And the sign, the...
The sign schematic is seven feet, so maybe he misrepresented how this looks on, on your schematic. Your sign guy, who is the sign, sign thing?
Out of York Town.
Mm-hmm. All right, there's no way of knowing what this, what this length is.
Well, we can make a motion and make it no larger than...
Yeah, no wider than the window.
Than the window.
But then what about height? We okay with the height here?
2.5 feet's okay.
Yeah, that's not that high.
Yeah, 'cause then the letter's gotta go in there.
I'm, I think I'm okay with the height.
Yeah, all right, so Mike...
It's just the width.
We'll limit, limit the length.
Limit the length?
No, no longer than the width of the windows. Do you understand that?
I know, okay. We, yeah, we're gonna adjust a little bit, but this one...
If you're gonna come up, Mike, just grab that other mic, so that way you can talk, that other microphone you see on the side. Yeah, that way you can talk, so they can record it.
Oh, okay. Because the link designer there...
Just speak, speak into the microphone.
Oh, okay. But they matched on top the spot here. We have the panel on the top here. But look at the better, it's the, on top the panel, not, not...
Oh, that, that's a built-in panel?
Yeah, this is the panel here, yeah. Look at the panel. Yeah, you, you cannot look at the glass, glass is different, you know?
No, we get that, but this...
This, this is the whole panel here.
So there's no, there's no siding there? It's a panel?
It's a white panel, like a wooden, is it wooden? Looks like wood from...
No, it's a hardwood, like cement, yes, cement, yeah, you know, fireproof. Yeah, this one, the, the link, you know, they designed it, it's a match on the top, not the bottom.
So aesthetically, right?
Okay, okay. Yeah, what do you like?
You wanna center this sign?
This is center, okay.
To the center of the window, but no wider than the window.
Okay, no problem. Okay, okay, I got it, yeah. I tell them going to adjust, okay, okay, all right.
And I don't know, I mean, it's not, I don't wanna hold you over, because it looks like you're open here already, right?
Yeah.
Are you open already?
No.
So you're bringing 92 over?
Very, very soon, yeah, very soon. I wanna try opening it next week.
So, um...
Yeah.
There's no way of knowing what this seven-foot dimension is that, that's on the drawing?
Yeah, this is a very, very small sign, not, not that big, huh?
If that's seven-foot dimension fits within here to here...
Okay, in the middle, in, in the center, right?
I would center it with that.
Okay, seven feet, okay.
And then, just make sure it doesn't, we'll, we'll make that language clear when someone makes a motion here.
Center to the window and no wider than the window?
No wider than the window.
No wider than the window, okay, no problem, it's okay. I tell them, just adjust a little bit.
Aesthetically, yeah.
Okay, right?
And the height stays the same, the height, the height stays...
The height, I gotta stay the same, okay.
So this one is backlit, and the front sign is backlit? It's got lighting?
Yes, the front sign is backlit.
The front sign, we gotta always a lighting there.
Yeah, that's, that's a red, it's a red sign. All the signs there are red, right?
Yeah, the other side, no, we have a sign out of color. We, we have the, like, a foot size, we have the yellow color there, like a, like a roof size, you know, sign, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, right, okay, yeah.
But, but the signs are also, it's, they're not letterbox, the, the signs there, they're, they're the carved-out letters, they're nice.
Yeah.
They're, they're pretty.
Everybody talking about a nice sign.
No, the signs in the front are nice, I like them.
All right, Willie, got any input, questions?
Does it open up the other side of the building for the same situation?
That's his restaurant.
That's a good question.
It is my restaurant, yes.
Yeah, I don't think so, because, like I said, each store is pretty sizable, and then...
Then you got this.
This one is smaller, yeah, small, small.
So you own all three restaurants?
Huh?
You own all three spots, restaurants?
No, he doesn't own Bella Cucina, and he doesn't own...
No, I don't own, I don't own...
He owns the building.
The strip mall he owns.
You own the building.
He owns the building.
Yeah, I own the building, yes, yes, yes.
And, and that restaurant is...
Okay, no question.
Each establishment's entitled to what I said before.
Yeah.
The two square feet per...
Yeah, so the signs in the front are perfectly legal, they're perfectly fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but each, each case is judged on its own merits, right? And there's a reason for him needing this, because it's so small, so...
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
You guys, down here, good? All right, any input from the public on this application?
What was the final number?
We don't have one.
We don't have it, because he doesn't know the dimension of the window, but aesthetically...
So we're gonna condition it to the dimension of the window.
So it's to be centered with the window and no wider than the window.
And what about that?
Two and a half feet.
I think everyone's okay with two and a half.
That's right, just so I know what the...
It's two feet, five inches, right?
Oh, yeah, two, two foot five inches.
I keep saying two and a half feet, 'cause I see the five.
I believe he meant two feet, two and a half feet.
Yes, two feet, five inches.
No, it says two foot five.
Two, two feet, five, two foot five. It's only an inch difference.
I know, but I, it's two feet, five inches.
It's okay, it's smaller.
One question, Mike, what does the 92 refer to?
Oh, this is, they gotta design them like, you know, local for the whole thing, you know?
Doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, they got it coming up.
92 types of chicken sauces, huh?
Yeah, but because this, this company, they open a lot of same kind of name in the New York City.
Oh, it's a franchise?
It's a franchise?
Not a franchise.
No?
It's, it's like a private, you know?
Private company.
Doesn't mean anything, 92.
Maybe it was created in 92.
That's what I mean, they, they got a name, yeah.
Boy, there's 92 flavors.
It's 92 flavors.
All right, no input from the public. I'll look for a motion to close the hearing on this application.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Okay.
Good night.
John, that's it.
Number six, Guthrow, they are requesting a holdover. I think we said that already, right?
No, we didn't do that one, no. Motion, hold over?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number seven, Achilles Dupus, for variation of section 156-15, seeking an area of areas for permission to add cover over front sidewalk. The property is located 441 Route 6, Mahol Pack, tax map 75.16-1-18. So the code requires or allows 40-foot frontage. What's gonna be provided or requested is 4.5 feet, so a variance of 35.5 feet is required. Come on up. State your name and address for the record.
Demetrius Dupus, 14 Half Field Road, Mahol Pack, New York.
You're the architect representing, I presume?
Representing, yes.
Three, just speaking to the microphone, too, when, when, when you're speaking. Raise your hand. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you, sir. You can turn it up to, to your mouth, so push it up.
Good evening, everyone. As you can see, what we're proposing this evening is to add a covered facade roof, just to dress up the property. The building is existing. We're not looking to exceed any further encroachment other than the existing sidewalk, so our request for the 35 and a half feet is existing, so we're gonna maintain the distance without any further, you know, disruption, so...
So there's definitely some facade enhancements here as well. Is that, is that still existing or overbought?
Facade enhancements, that's, the top one is existing, and then the bottom one, we're adding a series of columns with a roof extension.
Sort of give it to a, a...
Just street presence, yeah, you know, just trying to...
Help protection for whatever...
Weather, you know, rain, yeah.
They're in front of the planning board for a waiver.
Okay.
'Cause there's no use involved, it's just a walk-by.
I see the... I mean, there's no other property you can buy, you're right on Route 6 there, right? So...
It's a tough lot.
Tough lot, but the building's in, in need of some, some upkeep.
We're just looking to update the facade, give it some street presence, and, you know, update the signage for, you know, the tenants and...
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's a welcome improvement.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it's a welcome enhancement.
Appreciate it.
So...
It'll look nice.
I have no issues with it. Board members, John?
Looks good.
Rose?
The overhang is going further than it is right now, correct?
A little bit.
That, so it's gonna, it's gonna go right up to the...
The curb.
The curb?
The columns that support the roof structure are on the curb, but then you have a little bit of a, of a projection about, say, two and a half feet beyond the columns. So the overhang encroaches more, but the actual structural element will not.
Okay, so the overhang will go into the parking area, correct?
Yes.
Like two and a half feet into the parking area?
Yes, the overhang, like a, like the roof, like an eve, you know, on the side of a house or the front, yes.
Okay, no questions?
How high is, how high is that off the ground, the elevation, the two and a half feet?
So the elevation is about 10, 10 feet, four inches from, so, you know, commercial vehicles, you know, there's, there's some room.
Yeah, that's all pavement in front, right?
It's all park, yeah. There's parking and vehicular, you know, passage.
Are you gonna match the sidewalk to line up with, with the columns?
It'll be a little bit step back. We still wanna have pedestrians be able to, like, a wheelchair, whatever, be able to use the sidewalk without it, you know, interfering with their passage.
All right, makes sense.
So you'll have wheelchair accessibility somewhere?
There's a ramp, existing ramp, so we need to respect that.
All right.
John stole my question.
Willie, got anything? Okay. All right, any input from the public on this application? I don't think so. I'll look for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So, you all, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck, thank you.
All right, application number eight, Thomas Simone, for variation of section 156.15 and 156.4781, seeking a use variance for permission to retain the deck. Property is located at 9 Batista Drive from Mahol Pack, New York, tax map 75.16-1-30. So the code requires or allows 25 feet to the front. What's provided is 23 feet to steps, and a variance of two feet is being sought. And then the code requires or allows 10 feet to the side, .5 feet's provided, so a big variance of 9.5 feet is being requested. Mr. Simone?
Yes.
State your name and address for the record.
Tom Simone, 9 Batista Drive, Mahol Pack.
Raise your hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right, bring us through your application.
You know, I, I just want the board to know that when I purchased my house, it was a, to get in the house, you had to walk up two steps, and the doorknob is like up here. It was really unusual. I'm surprised the last people even dealt with that. So I says, it had a beautiful concrete patio that they, they had, that they did have, and I said, "I'm gonna put a deck over the patio, and it'd be nicer level, so I can walk in the house without walking one, two steps." So I knew how to get a permit. I walked right up here to the building inspector. At the time, it was Nick Mole, and I brought him a set of plans, you know, that I drew up myself. I said, "Mr. Mole," I says, "I explained it, you know, my deck, two steps to get into my house." It was very unusual, a little awkward. So I showed him the plan, I showed him what I wanted to do, and this is exactly what he said to me. He says, "If it's less than two, if it's less than three feet off the ground, you don't need a permit." Now, I'm going back in the 80s here, it's been a long time, and I had this conversation with Michael, and I says, and I, he kinda threw me a little bit, because I, I do know you need permits for stuff, even though I was a lot younger, you know, and I was like, "Okay." He says, "But," he says, "I do have to do a framing inspection before you put your deck on." I remember he told me that.
Okay.
So I had a framer, he's a regular framer, I had a friend of mine, and we framed out the whole deck. And before I put the deck on, I came and showed Mr. Mole what I did. And he says, "Okay," he said, he scheduled me, he came and looked at it, and he walked around a little bit, he says, "Everything looks fine," and he says, "You can put your deck on." Before he left, this is what I said to him. I said, "Mr. Mole, thank you very much, but I think I'd rather have the permit," you know, and he got mad at me. He got mad at me, and, and he says, "I told you," he says, "It's less than three feet off the ground, you don't need a permit." And I was like, "Okay, Mr. Mole," you know, I was a lot younger back then, I didn't wanna, listen, what was, what was I gonna do? So I knew where my stake was for my, my line, 'cause it's on an old survey that I had. So I built the deck over the patio that was existing, you know, and he came and looked at it, and he gave me the, the okay on and everything else. So lo and behold, it's all these years later, I'm doing a lot line adjustment, 'cause I own several properties there, so I wanna make it to the line straight. So I had the whole property resurveyed, I had everything resurveyed, and Bob Baxter, great guy, he's, he's not in business anymore, but he, he did a really good job. He says, "You know, that deck's over the line." I said, "The deck's not over the line." I says, "There's my pin." I said, "It's right to the pin." He says, "The pin's in the wrong spot." He says, "Now the deck," he says, "Now it's over the line." I says, he says, he says, "This is typical in all these old neighborhoods. Nothing's exactly the way it appears to be." So I says, "Well, okay," so I came to Mike, 'cause I get a permit, 'cause my, my, maybe my daughter will want the house, I don't know. So I came to Mike, and he says, "Well, you're gonna need a variance." Because, and I said, "I know it's over the line," he showed me, and so, and Mike was right on that, and I saw, and I says, so I says, "All right, look, the property, and if you're concerned about my neighbors and all the rest of that stuff, I'm on my fourth neighbor. It's never been a problem. It's, it's, four neighbors have bought the property next to me."
If they had an issue, they'd be here tonight, so...
Yeah, it's never been a problem. You wouldn't even notice it if you were there. If you saw the neighborhood and the way it is, it's an old neighborhood, there's tree lines and everything else.
Tom, there's no property you can buy to bring it into conformance, it's towards the front, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's not...
You're landlocked there.
Believe me, I, I didn't know it until Bob Baxter even told me. I thought it was fine the way it was, but, listen, Nick came and looked at it, he gave me all of, and I just kinda rolled with it, you know, and...
Is he still alive?
Uh-huh.
Is he still alive?
Oh, he's gone forever.
Mike, do you know, is Nick Mole still alive? He passed out, God rest his soul.
Yeah, he's gone a long, long time, but...
All right, well, certainly not.
He was in your dad's day, John, a long time ago.
Back in, back in the...
Yeah, so anyway, but, so, yeah, I'm looking for a variance, 'cause I wanna get a permit, and this is my first step, and I gotta do my deck over, so Mike told me, "Before you do anything, says, "Come here."
It's the right thing, it's the right thing.
Yeah, so this is where I'm at.
All right, Will, any questions or comments? Sil?
No.
No comments.
Rose?
If you're doing it over, can't you just pull it in another foot?
Well, it would be, no. No, it, it's structured that way.
Pull the footings in.
Yeah, all the footings are in, and everything else, you just can't, like, just say, "Okay, I'm gonna shorten."
But can we grant a variance on something that isn't his property?
It's on his property.
It's on his property.
No, it goes over the line.
Yeah, but your application says .5 feet, you're right up to the line.
Yeah, it's, and, and it's not like it's, it's basically an overhang. It's not like the footings and everything are on the other person's property, it's just an overhang, and, believe me, I, and, and it actually goes to my existing pin that shows on my other survey. And he says, "Oh, that's not the pri," he says, "It's over here." And I, I says, "Well," survey says it's here, he says, "No."
But the survey, but this is what his application says.
Yeah, but the drawing looks like it's over.
Legalize this.
It goes over.
It goes over, and he just said it goes over.
Mike, you wanna take a look at this? Hey, Mike, you, you made the assessment here, right, with the .5 and, and the 9.1?
I'm looking, but is that a wall?
Where, a wall?
Along the property line? Or is that the deck over the property line?
No, it's the deck.
Over the property line?
Well, it's the deck, yeah.
Yeah, the deck's over the property line.
But it's not on, but on my, on my other survey... But it's not on, but on my, on my other survey, the pin says that's the property line.
This says deck point five inside at the front.
Jesus, I can't see, sorry.
One point three-five outside on the back, but I think that's over the line.
But is that a wall, or is that the deck, I thought you said that was like a, a wall that runs between the property lines?
Well, there's a wall on the downside of the property, but where the deck is, there's no wall.
You're gonna have to.
But there's another wall that runs the opposite direction.
It's gotta either be pulled back.
It's just, uh, but, but it's a retaining wall, it's gotta be there.
It's gotta be pulled back.
It's gotta be pulled back to the property line.
The stone wall, you can't.
Or an easement.
Or you could get a lot, like, boundary line agreement with the neighbor, and the, the, obviously, the, the setback would be a zero where it approaches, right, and then you can get the.
He's a foot over.
You get the permission from the neighbor for the additional, but it, if.
The stone wall down below, that's on the other side, that is not up by the deck, the deck is actually in line with it, and Mr. Baxter even looked at it, he says, he says, yeah, he says, it's, he says, the deck is good, but he says, the, it, I said, but it's to the pin, he says, though, the pin's not in the right, he said, that's not right either, I was like, well, that's on my other survey, that's where it is.
All right, Tom, so you're either gonna have to cut it back to this dimension of what your application says, point five?
Or zero?
Or, no, well, point five, or you have to re-advertise and come back next month.
It's gotta be re-advertising.
It's gotta be re-advertising at zero.
I have to re-advertise?
If it's at zero, right now, your application is advertised at point five feet of, of, um, provided to the property line, you're needing a variance of nine point five feet, so.
How many feet?
Your, your survey is showing that it's one point three-five feet over your property line, so you're either gonna have to cut, if we approve this tonight, you're gonna have to cut it back, so it meets that point five.
Or it could be zero.
If we approve it at point five, or zero.
We can't.
No, we can't.
We can't advertise it.
You have to point five.
If you wanna go zero, either way, you're gonna have to cut it back, so my recommendation to you is to cut the deck back to the point five if we're gonna give you that variance.
You want me to saw how much off the deck?
Your survey says one point three-five feet at that far left side end.
So you'd have to go one point eight-five feet to make it correct.
Or you can, or you can get an agreement from the neighbor, cuz I'm assuming the deck's been there for a while, for the presence of the deck on the property, and you come back and do this as a zero lot line, then you have more things covered.
That's a bet, that's the best bet.
Okay, I don't, I exactly hear.
So you need, in order, the board can't give you permission to put the deck, it's on, the board can't give you permission to put the deck encroaching on the neighbor's property, but you can get the neighbor's permission in some written instrument, a lot line, a boundary line agreement, an easement or whatever.
I don't, I don't think Tony would have any problem with that.
Right, but it still makes your variance you need here today a zero lot line, because it actually is across the line, so you're going all the way up to your line, that would be the zero lot line variance, and then the permission on the boundary line agreement from the neighbor would be the next step that you need, but you can do both of those things for the next meeting, you can re-advertise it for a zero and get the boundary line agreement, and, and that way you could have it without modify, modify, the, the board can consider it without modifying, which I'm sure you don't wanna cut.
So if my neighbor agreed to where it is, okay, and there's never been a problem, I wouldn't have to cut the deck back.
Correct, just change the application to zero.
Instead of point five.
Notice it.
Okay, that's not a problem, I, I, I don't think it's gonna be a problem, he's never around, he lives in the city all the time anyway, but I, I have a very good relationship with him.
It's just, you don't know if they're gonna sell or whatever, so this agreement will stay between the two properties.
It'll actually help them. It'll actually help them, it's a good sell, cuz you encroach it.
Okay, I don't, I don't mind doing that, uh, um, I would ha, I would ask him, and then he would have to, what, write something up?
It's a boundary line agreement that you can do, okay, and it's pretty simple, and I have forms of them that I can give to you that you can fill in the blanks.
Is there an, do you have an, 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 an application for that, or, no?
No, but the boundary line agreement would be part of your application when you change it to zero setback, as long as your neighbor's on.
I'll stop up and we'll, okay.
Mike has them, or if not, I'll send them to him.
Yeah, I, I don't think my neighbor would have a problem with that at all.
How long's it been?
Huh?
How long's it been there?
Nick was here, so it's over twenty-eight years.
He's been there, well, he's, he's the fourth one, he's the fourth one, he's been there about, I'd say he's been there about five years.
No, the deck.
No, the deck. The back itself has been there.
You built the deck, you built the deck.
Well, when did I build a deck?
Yeah.
Oh, it was back in the eighties.
Eighties.
So it's all thirty years.
Thirty years, almost forty.
John, what's your question?
Uh, just a quick one, I know it's, um, very easy, why is it a use variance, not an area variance?
Cuz he has a two-family house.
Oh, it's two-family.
Same as the, uh, Festo application that you guys were hearing a few weeks ago with the, a few months ago with the garage that they were adding.
All right, I, I don't have a problem doing that.
You wanna do that? Okay, just go up to Mike tomorrow and.
From, from a procedural standpoint, do we dismiss this, or we hold it over?
No, hold it over.
Hold it over for re-advertising.
Because he, he can redo it, okay.
Re-advertise.
Yeah, okay.
All right, look for a motion to hold the application over.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, guys.
Good luck. Go see him.
Okay, thank you.
Another holdover, Mike.
Last?
We'll ha, we'll have a new record of holdovers next month.
Yes, we will.
All right, uh, application of Christopher Moreno.
I think he's got a lot of opposition.
Variance of section one-five-six dash fifteen, seeking an area variance for permission to build a detached garage on the side of one family, one family dwelling. Property's located seventy-five Kia Ora Boulevard, Mopack, New York, tax map's eighty-seven point five dash two dash four six. So the code requires and allows ten feet from exist, accessory building to side property line. Uh, seven feet is provided, and a variance of three feet is being sought. Good evening, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone, uh.
You can hold on to this.
Christopher Moreno, seventy-five Kia Ora Boulevard, Maypack, New York.
All right, raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right, bring us through your application.
Uh, so I wanna put a small detached garage, there's not a lot of space there, and my house is, um, it's not square to the property line, so I'm trying to keep it square to the property line and be reasonable with the amount of, um, variance that I request, I don't wanna get too close to my neighbor's property line.